With folks in Councilbluffs. You know, sometimes if it's a tie, obviously, you know, Councilbluffs wins. But if it's real close, perhaps we reevaluate and give the Councilbluffs business a shot. Thank you.
I think the key here is that this is required by Iowa code. So we have to follow the law as far as Loos Better. We don't have a luxury of deciding to award to other businesses other than Loos Better. However, we have had discussions in the past about could we possibly define responsible better? Because there have been a few issues where we had a contractor that was Loos Better and we just weren't sure it was right for the job. So I think the key would be working with our city attorney to ensure we can do this within the code, within the law, and not have any potential lawsuits. And as long as we can do this within the code, I fully support the idea of looking at past performance, looking at quality of work, looking at if you came in under budget, looking at if you came in on time, all these things to ensure that we really are getting the best thing for our buck. We're getting the best contractor for each job while still following the law.
When I thought about this question, I wrote myself, the note I wrote myself was, you get what you pay for. So absolutely, I think this makes sense. You do what you pay for in terms of the quality of individuals that are working on the job. Are they following the safety procedures, the work that they're doing? If you work in a local field, you know, you've probably worked on some higher voltage work and you know that if you don't take it correctly, it leads to problems in the future. There's little things like that, but they may be a little bit more expensive, but we pay for it in the long run and we need to make sure we're not spending extra money on things we don't need to. So absolutely, I support having a responsibility here.
Well, I can't change Iowa code, but I do have thoughts on both under budget and safety. You know, coming in under budget is great for the taxpayers, but we need to be really careful not to create an atmosphere where contractors start over bidding so they can come in under budget. That's not a good situation. Regarding completing the work on time, the contracts usually do include a provision and there's a penalty if the work is not completed on time. But with that being said, in and out of safety, I sure wouldn't want to have any company rushing through a project to avoid those light penalties. Safety of the workers and the general public who may come near the work sites is absolutely critical. Many jobs can be dangerous and are dangerous, so it would be, I think, prudent to know the safety records of the companies that are bidding contracts. Thank you.
Don't give him the mic back. Goodness gracious.
Well, you'll get a minute at the end to talk about whatever you want. The next question is coming from probably one of our WestEnders. Residents of the West End have had a rough couple of years. And this one goes to Mr. Hutchinson first. For example, we lost the Iowa West funding for the West Broadway reconstruction product, project, when the medias were voted down. The police station is moving further east, the post office is moving further east, the health department has lost a significant amount of environmental improvement funding, et cetera. A good number of us will lose our homes to the interstate expansion project. The people requesting and/or making these decisions don't even live on the West End. As a council candidate, how would you describe your level of commitment to the seemingly neglected part of the city?
You know, my level of commitment to the West End of Councilbluffs is equal to mine to the East End and the North and the South End of Councilbluffs. You know, as I previously said, city council members are likely to represent the interests of the community as a whole. And this means that we must represent residents from all areas of Councilbluffs, including the West End, to the same level that we would represent residents on the sort of our ends. And I think this starts with understanding and addressing the concerns of residents who feel that they've been neglected. And that is a theme that I've heard from West End residents is that, you know, they feel like they've been neglected with regards to infrastructure and those types of things. So I hope anyone to continue speaking with me so that I can understand those concerns and can better address them during my time on the city council. Because again, my commitment level is equal for all parts of Councilbluffs. I don't think you can have it any other way as a lack of efficiency for our city. Thank you.
My church is located in the West End. Did a lot of my canvassing in the West End. I just have touched base with a lot of the working families and again, our seniors and our young people that are in that area. And I just feel a mandate to be a voice for them, to be a voice for, really for all of our citizens, our working families, our young people, those underserved communities and some that happens to be in the West End. So I would have a high priority for working with the West End. I think I would have a high commitment to it, as well as I would for the whole city because I would be representing our city. So, thank you very much.
Well, the West End is pretty important to our town. It's a large, large section of our city. That being said, it's also what the Omaha metro area folks see first. It's what people coming from west to east see first. There's been many studies done on things in regards to raising the income, I guess you'd say, of a city or the tax base. And what they found oftentimes is it's easier in terms of better results to reinvest into what you already have and the businesses you have, the houses, the people that you have as to trying to bring in outsiders. Those that are already here have vested interests. You know, as I said earlier, we talked about the levees and things. The West End and all that down there is very important. Councilbluffs is a huge chunk. I, you know, I think we're talking about, you know, 40,000 people or a town is 60, around a little over 60,000. I mean, that's a vast majority of Councilbluffs. So we need to shore up some of the, there's spots in town where everyone knows it that aren't always the best. We need to shore those places up and definitely bear down and reinvest into that part of our community, as we do everywhere in this community. You know, we shouldn't think of east, west, south, Councilbluffs. We should just think of Councilbluffs as a whole. So, thank you.
We are elected to serve the community as a whole and I think that's very true. We have to really look at all aspects of the community and all places, no one should be forgotten. And they talk about Broadway in here and that's kind of a double edged sword. Right now, it is a huge inconvenience for those traveling, working, living in that area, but at the same time, that shows our commitment to the West End is huge. We're investing a large amount of money and time and effort on the West End right now to do some very much overdue, very needed improvement. There's little to no infrastructure along Broadway. It caused a lot of problems when there was rain, for example. So this was a priority that had to be done. We completely understand it's inconvenience right now, but as it gets finished, it's going to improve the quality of life for those in this area, both businesses and residents. I think a good topic or a good point to point out that we really do listen to your concerns with the medians. We had thousands and thousands of people come forward, both residents down there, both people that traveled that section, and a lot of business owners that did not want the medians. They felt it was going to be an inconvenience, it was going to cause business loss. So I chose in the end to not let the medians in because that's what I felt the West End really, truly wanted. And here it states that because of that, iOS was not going to fund the projects and that's incorrect. So we actually took a lot of time meeting with iOS. We came to compromise that even though the medians were out, they would still continue to fund the other beautification projects along Broadway. So you'll still see a lot of streets gained and other work. And so we really are focusing on the West End and doing what we can to improve it down there. We're trying to do infill housing and just other projects down there. And I hope that if whoever wrote this, I hope you tell them you can come talk to us and give us ideas. I would love to get them.
So I think the West End is really a key part of the city. All parts of our city matter, right? So we need to make sure that all ends are covered, you know, we need to make sure each side has parks and raccocks like the west side does. But on the west side of the city, there's a lot of areas where we can improve. The reconstruction of West Broadway is a great example for the city to that end, right? We want to make sure that not only the road is usable and drivable, but that we have storm sewers. I've talked to Pat Miller a little bit as I've been kind of preparing and kind of thinking about, you know, how the city council works and things that I can do. And you know, one of the things that he said to me was the storm drains out there, of which there are none on West Broadway, but those that are out there, they actually go down two stories to be able to get the fall, to be able to pump back out to the river. So when you think about the challenges out there, we really need to focus on how we're going to adjust what we're doing out there and how we're making those roads and places better. I think my personal commitment, you know, I think if I mentioned it at the beginning, Link is a passionate, is a passionate mind. Having the citywide wifi is something where we've seen not only the residents, but the school students as well, be able to come together, be able to do things at home that they weren't able to do, they weren't able to afford. I'm very passionate about that. I think we need to continue our westward movement there to make sure that we have that internet level service for all the residents. And one thing I did want to point out, there was a part, there was a piece in the question about some residential neighborhoods and rezoning. And I just want to, you know, call out that I am on the city zoning, or the city planning commission. And we debated, there was a property that was zoned residential and they asked us to move to commercial. And we debated that in the commission for probably a good 45 minutes. We ended up voting it down because it did not conform to the plan, the Councilbluffs 2030 plan. And we also felt like going into residential neighborhoods and changing that, adding businesses at random spots, whether that's industrial, commercial, is not the way to go.
Well, I'm definitely committed to the West End, the South End, the North End, the East End, the Center End, portion. We're, you know, we're elective at large, which means we represent the whole city. And I think I've demonstrated over my 12 years on the council that I really take the time to look at every issue and make the decision that I feel is in the best interest for the entire city. As far as development on the West End, the city put a lot of money, along with its partners, into building Tom and Hampton Park. And in just a few weeks, the community pavilion will be open for you, for me, for all of us to enjoy. Bring parties there, bring our families. Remember the old Frieda Lake plant? That's gone now and there's a beautiful apartment complex there. And that's a lot of money in the West End. West Broadway reconstruction, that old eyesore of a grain elevator on West Broadway, it's not gone. That area is ripe for development, so more investment is coming. Plainland Park area, along with Hampton Park, there's going to be condos, apartments, town homes, live work units, and a small park. So it's going to be a great infusion. When the interstate reconstruction is done someday, some year, we will lose some houses on the West End in the name of progress, but the accessibility is going to be much better for all of us. So I want everyone to know that I'm committed to, you know, not only the West End, but every single neighborhood in the city. Thank you.
People in the West End have had it rough. It's been tough for everybody in the West End. And it's going to be tough until they get all the streets and stuff done and the sewers and the grain stores in all putting like they're supposed to be. The center media, if you look back at 2007, they had a complete diagram, a complete picture of what Broadway was going to look like with the center medias and stuff. And that was all done previous. And then it comes up to this administration, there's issues with it, they decide to take it out. West Foundation wants their money back because we're not going to put that in there. And without the city's opinion, the citizens of Councilbluffs, without their opinion, a lot of things go by the wayside. The city, excuse me, the citizens of the city and Councilbluffs, they have to get involved. That includes you people. Everything that the city does, you people need to get involved. I think it was 3% of the store owners on Broadway come to the meeting, and the city council had that, about the center media going in. 3% of the owners showed up. And then when they were going to put that center media in, everybody got upset. And they talked about the post office, you know, they're going to build a new post office when they have a chance to put it in Sears. Guys got to realize, it's a lot of money. And the old Sears building, that they actually started, a real old Sears building, is a best place to put it. They've got previous docks there, it's all set up, and it's going to save the state, city a lot of money. But to beautify the city of Councilbluffs, coming in from Omaha, that's something that had to be done. Sewers had to be done. They talked about construction being done. People, you got to put up with it because this is what everybody wants, this is what had to be done.
Okay, we've had a lot of questions tonight and we've had a lot of questions submitted. I think we have time for maybe one more. We could keep it brief because you guys have done great keeping in your time. So the last question, this is Miss Sanford again. What are you hearing from citizens on how to move Councilbluffs forward?
Well, I've been at Councilbluffs, like I said, my whole life. And a few of the things that I've seen is that Councilbluffs has grown and changed and become far more diverse. And one of the things that I have been hearing is that they like to see the city council represent that diversity, that it would be nice to show that we have all this diversity, but when we look at the city council, it doesn't necessarily show it. So they like to see it, see more diversity in our city council. Also, I've been canvassing a lot on the West End, it just so happens that that's what's happened. And they're asking for a police presence on the West End. What I've heard is they'd like to see maybe a precinct on the West End because the main station's moving out east, so they'd like to see a presence there on the West End. And then finally, I spoke with so many seniors, and I know I keep mentioning this, but it's a passion for me, not that I've spoken to so many of them. And I don't know what the city can do for them, but I feel like we stand on their shoulders. Many of them were born and raised here and have given their lives to this city. And they were just devastated, many of them, because there's not enough resources for them. So I think that it's on city council, if we can do something for our senior community, we owe it to them. So those are the few things that I've been seeing and hearing as far as moving the city forward, that we can represent our seniors, that we can take care of them. That's it. Thank you.
A lot of folks that I've been speaking with has a late, everyone's got their two cents, obviously, but a couple recurring themes have come up. Transparency with our budget is a large issue for many folks in this area. They'd like to see the Councilbluffs budget. One lady said to me, she said, Joe, I want it to be easy enough to read that a sixth grader could understand it. I understand that's not a reality always, but it's something to shoot for perhaps. Another, another large issue people have is with the infrastructure, with the roads. You know, obviously, we're talking about how that's being fixed in certain parts of town, we need to keep that up and fix more areas of town. And it's going to take time and proper planning. Again, another spot that people have discussed with me at great length is public safety and many assets in that. Public safety in regards to having enough officers on, having enough fire personnel, you know. Sometimes we try and cut budgets, but at the same time, those numbers are going to have to come up for, or for us to get where we need to be. We need to, you see in the paper, you see in the news, drugs, violence, things like that, those are Councilbluffs values and activities. That stuff needs to be gone. We need to get it out of here. And if it takes hiring more police officers or hiring more firefighters, that's what we're going to have to do. So, thank you.
I think honestly, we hear a little bit of everything for wants and needs and sometimes that's what makes our position as a council member very difficult. Because you always have to weigh the wants and needs of the whole community and make a decision what really is best for the greater good. But there are always, of course, recurring themes. Keeping the tax levy down so that what you're each paying is as low as possible is always extremely important. But at the same time, having high public safety, ensuring that you have all the services that you enjoy, such as the parks and their recreation and events, good streets, so good snow removal, all these things cost money. So I think a lot of what we're trying to do is just to continue to grow the city, grow our tax base, and do it in a right way. A lot of things we've heard lately is the need for housing of all types. We need housing for our elderly, we need housing for residents of living, we need low income housing, we need some unique housing to attract our younger folks back home from college. So we've been really working on expanding the housing base, while also just coming up with more things in the city to do and revitalizing some areas within the community. There's been a lot of growth on outskirts, which is great to see, a lot of new businesses brought in, but also focusing on what we currently have. How can we help our current businesses? That's something we reached out a lot of our current businesses. How can we help them kind of grow? And then just looking at what areas of town maybe could use facelifts or could use some new development. So it's really just trying to look at everything as a whole and doing what we can for everybody in the community.
So, you know, it's been, it's been really interesting, I think, talking to a lot of the folks that I've talked to. So, you know, the firefighters are one of the first groups that I reached out to in Concastra. And one of the things that I noticed, or one of the things we talked about is there were two origin stations to do and then kind of talking about things, was, you know, the use of technology in our services, in our engines. So this particular example, we have these GPS units that we can monitor fire trucks. We actually have them. We can't put them in the trucks though, because they don't talk to the 911 center. So we actually can't use them because we don't believe, they just aren't communicating. So there's things like that that we can look to and make it more efficient, use our IT resources correctly. I think that's one thing I heard a lot of. One of the things that I was talking about, the draw from the group, we talked a lot about streets. And we talked a lot about plans and budgets and how that all ties together. And I think we've really got other, those two things. One is transparency. And I think everyone is doing, is working to work on the right, is wanting to do the right thing and moving that way. But when we do that, a lot of times you get so focused where you forget to tell everyone about what's going on. So there's, I'm sure there's a plan for the streets and how we're going to pave them and how we're going to fix things, but it's not out there and easily findable. The levees are another example. Like, we know that's something they have to work on, but as I went to them and tried to find an actual plan, that this is what we're going to do next year, and this is the second year, third year, fourth year, it's not published anywhere. And so the extra steps that we have to go through with citizens to find that information should be, should just be out there published. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there. And I think the last thing I've heard is just, you know, there's been, there's been a lot of decisions, or there's been a number of decisions by some members of the council that aren't necessarily based in fact. They're based in opinion and they're kind of a knee jerk reaction to something. And I've heard a lot about, you know, let's bring the facts back, let's talk about the facts, let's make decisions based on those so that we can do what's right for the city as a whole.
Well, as always on the chatterbox, I'm out and about all the time. And I'm hearing a number of things, actually. A lot of positive stuff that's going on in the city and people want to see that continue, as do I. And they also express a little bit of frustration that progress doesn't seem to be happening. And I know a lot of projects take a lot of years to complete, but I want to make sure that the progress in the city does keep going. Also heard some comments about a frustration or maybe a general sense of surprise sometimes at council meetings. And there's a lot of people that watch the council meetings, apparently. I thought I was the only one, but there's a lot of people that watch it. And so I've heard some interesting comments about council members not being prepared. I've heard comments about maybe some disrespectful tones at the council meeting. And, you know, it's a business meeting, so whatever I can do collectively to make sure that the council meetings run in a professional, polite manner, you can differ in your opinion, but be, but be polite. Taxes are another issue. Nobody wants high taxes. And I am proud to say that during my 12 years on the council, we did not once raise a tax levy. So if I'm elected, I will continue to monitor and do the best I can do to use your tax dollars wisely. I'm going to be the same kind of councilperson I was before. Prepared for meetings, not afraid to make a decision, and just ready to serve the community. I've talked about all the time. I go to as many meetings as I need to and I'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Number one, our city needs more traction and to get the families to stay here instead of going to Omaha, get more things that the family can do here. Number two, we need more law enforcement officers in the city of Councilbluffs, more than you people know. I've talked to a lot of people, because I deal with a lot of people in the business, and they're asking me, why is it that the law enforcement officers are taking 25 minutes to get to our area that we need them? Because I'll tell you why. There's only seven at the max that I know of officers on the street at night. We need more officers. 100 people filled out applications, five made it. When the five come back, two weeks later, two quit. And granted, they had to pay a certain amount of money back to the city, but we got to give them a reason to stay here. I worked, I started a group called the Cane's Little Letters Autoguard, like I told you earlier. We've done over 280 funerals. We bought a building at 30th and Avenue B and we're going to hold a lot of PTSD meetings there beside our group. Number one, we offer the enforcement agency for them to have a place to go in, do the reports, have a private area that they can go in and take what's got to, or do what's got to be done. Officers maybe, and it's going to be depend on what the chief says and what the mayor says, whether or not they can do it. But the mayor and the chief both know that we've offered this. We've been working on this building for over nine months, trying to prepare for this, and this is something that we want to do. We want to get back to the community, not only as veterans, but also as, we have veterans that are on the force, not just law enforcement veterans, but people who have been in the military. And we want to give these people the opportunity to do their job and we want to offer them a spot on 30th and Avenue B to give them someplace where they can go in and do reports. But it's going to take the city of Councilbluffs, the public, to see that this goes through so we can hire more police officers. Not only that, but 1/10 to 1% of that money that we get from casinos goes to Des Moines. We got to figure out a way to get that money here. The old governor had, didn't like the casino to begin with. Now we got a new governor, and I made a pull from the chief and to the mayor that we go and we make an appointment with the governor to try and get some of that money back because the money we are putting out right now for the city of Councilbluffs is 10 times the amount that we're getting from the casinos. Thank you.
I think we can all agree that it's hard to move forward when you put the cart before the horse. And that's what I've been hearing from residents. You know, the beautification of Councilbluffs is important. You know, it makes our city appear more attractive and it brings in new people to help build that population base, but we can't sacrifice the infrastructure and, you know, in order for that beautification to continue. And that's what I've heard. You know, you have to make sure that you have a foundation and that that foundation is stable. You know, we have good roads, good service throughout the community, drain, sewer drains, all those things. You have to make sure that that infrastructure is there before you focus on cosmetic changes to the city. You know, you can do as many things as you want on the outside of the city to make it, to make it pretty, but you do that at the sacrifice of focusing on infrastructure. That, that beautiful new project or the beautification is only going to last so long. And that's what I've been hearing from residents is, you know, why are we focusing on beautification things when we're pushing things like infrastructure to the side? And the other thing that I've been hearing is, is that they just want more communication between the city government and our city residents. You know, budgetary communication, communication on where funding for projects is becoming obstacles or potential roadblocks that those projects may face, like iOS and Bullen funding. I think the community just wants to know about that. And so again, you can't move forward if you put the cart before the horse. So we do need to focus on the things that help us be successful and foundationally sound community first. Thank you.
We're getting a little close to eight o'clock and we said we'd try to wrap it up by then, but I did promise you all another minute each for closing comments. So if everyone in the room is willing to stay for about another seven minutes, and then after that, if you guys want to stick around and answer some questions, I'm sure there might be some folks out here who want to meet and greet with you guys. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Stanford for one minute closing comment.
Thank you to the CDCA for inviting me and including me in this forum. I, as I've been saying throughout the night, I just want to be a voice for the working people, a voice for our seniors, a voice for the underserved communities. I just think that it's time that they're heard on the city council, that their voice is represented on the city council. And so I don't even need a minute, I just ask that you vote for me because I will represent those, those areas that are not necessarily represented on the city council. Thank you so much and God bless.
I want to thank you guys for inviting us here to this event. A lot of folks have been asking when something like this is going to happen, so it's good to have, especially with everyone here before the primary, I think that's important. Overall, you know, there's a lot of things I'd like to get done in Councilbluffs, but most importantly, I'd like to raise my family here. And that being the driving force behind about everything that I'm going to do. I'm from Councilbluffs, I've been here almost my entire life, like I said, short of a few, few years in college, and then I made the cognitive decision to come back because this is where I want to be, this is where I have attachment, this is where I have friends, family, where I've worked, where I've done, and everything that I've done in my entire life, except short of college, which we don't really have before your institution in Councilbluffs that allows for collegiate athletics, what I did. On that note, again, I would, I would, I would ask for everyone's, everyone's support and if anyone would like to talk to me afterwards, I'd be more than willing to answer a few questions here, provided the little man in the back stops screaming. And with that, you know, I would just ask you guys all for your support, your vote going forward. Thank you very much.
I just want to thank you all again for coming tonight, for giving up your questions time to listen to each of us and make a decision on who you feel is best. And thank you to the Alliance for organizing this. It's the one we had. It's the only one we've had, I think, so it's a great opportunity. And I just really want to say thank you. The last eight years have been wonderful. I've loved serving you on the council, through ups and downs. It really has been a great opportunity to be a part of the community and just see so many great, you know, exciting things continue to go on in our community. And I would love the opportunity to serve you again for four more years. I just really would like to ask for each of you for your support and your vote.